I have to call this meeting to order. Roll call statement.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Camisher.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Rockley.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Yeah.
Remove the board if the agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers and second by Mr. Camisher to approve the agenda is presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. For some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. If you're interested, please come up to the podium, state your name, your capacity in the district, and you will be able to get three minutes to discuss what you want to discuss. We will not be able to respond to your comments because it is a non-agenda item, but we certainly will hear you. And if you are going to bring any items up, if you could please just remain, keep names confidential, that would be appreciated. Anybody here who would like to make any comments regarding a non-agenda board item? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our, um, uh, director, directors.
I'll pass around. Thank you. Ms. Camisher. Congratulations and thanks to the ladies softball team for a crazy game today.
Hi, Ms. Brockman.
Um, I would just like to say I hope everyone's having a great summer and I hope a lot of our families take advantage of the free week, um, next week to enjoy some time away and, um, as a family before we get going again into, uh, fall sports, so.
Uh, Ms. Miller.
Um, yeah, I would just like to thank all of the families, uh, in the Riverdale Heights district who have stepped up to make donations to the family in need in our district.
Thank you very much, yes.
Mr. Ayers.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Kunkel.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteers and staff that are working with the summer school program. I've heard lots of great things about the program this year, so that's always nice, um, to hear. And also, um, a great way to start kicking off getting ready for the school year is the pickleball event, um, Spartan Assembly's having, um, to raise money, um, for the food pantry, so.
And when is that again?
The pickleball, I believe it is the second week of August. I don't know the exact date. Um, and it's over at the Forest Grove Pickleball. So they have, um, all ages. So I think as young as, I think Harrison could do it. He's in fourth grade. And even adults, Molly and I did really well last year.
There's no record of it, but we did. Yeah. It's August tenth.
Sounds like a second annual for you.
Will that be on the district website? That information?
It should be. I'll double check real quick.
It is on Facebook, on their, um, Facebook page. They've been sharing it.
Great.
I do know they added additional time. It's like an all-day event this year because they had so many teams last year, so if I can find it real quick, I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Right, you go to the news section. There's.
Okay, great. Um, Ms. Miller, anything at all?
I have nothing.
Okay. Devin, let's try it.
I'll just echo, uh, Director Kunkel's sentiments on our summer school staff. It's great to have people who are so committed to our kids, parents, students, and, uh, I wasn't able to be there a lot, but when I was, it was jovial. I mean, truly like people singing and dancing, uh, just various people, um, making it fun for kids. And that's so very important in a summer school program to make sure that they're having an enjoyable experience as well as learning. Um, we did, we did conclude with, um, celebrations of their writing exemplars from the two-week unit that they did and, uh, each of the grades celebrated that in their own unique way. Some pictures were sent out with Facebook. Grateful to the staff and parents for making it happen.
Great. Ms. Randy.
Um, I was just going to introduce our sports teams, if you want me to go to that.
Uh, you know what? Why don't we wait?
Okay.
Oh, no. Mistake?
Up the good personnel agenda.
Okay. Ms. Reese.
I was gonna tell Heather I am failing right now and cannot find it, so if you can hold up later and let us know, that'd be awesome. I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Um, now, Ms. Fresh Green.
All right. Well, we are pleased to be recognized.
All right, well, we are pleased to be recognized.
Unless you have some thoughts or advice.
I guess I was thinking about as I go through this, there's many different ways to look at this and value what I think will be important. One of the factors that isn't in here is the administration's perspective on how they performed against the things we asked for last year.
Yes.
Who would really like that kind of information somehow?
Would you like that tonight, or?
Do you wanna dump it out right here or take it?
You know, I think, so going through, I'll start with priority number four last year is mental health. I think they continue to work through that process, and you'll see that's in here again in this one of the top eight that they have in here. Uh, I think mental health, it's, it's just tough because the staffing across the city, across the state is so hard trying to find people to fill that role. But again, mental health is still a top priority, will be a top priority. Um, I think the educators staff shortage and quality instruction, I think they did some great strides. Number one with the increase in salary this last year was huge, making sure it's forty-five thousand and the sixty, and the sixty-two five after that. Which is a, a great step forward. Uh, I think some of the things they've changed the way you can hire people or the, like with our teacher apprenticeship program that we have. We're looking at shortening that, good or bad, shortening the student teaching window to get them in the classroom quicker. We need to make sure we have a strong mentoring program to help them then. I think they've looked at how you take someone from industry and bring them into the classroom at a quicker rate also is good. So I think they've done some good strides there, we just have to make sure that we're still hiring quality teachers. You don't wanna sacrifice quickness for quality either, so that's something we're watching. Educational opportunities, um, I think again, when you look at that, the public school funding where we're at. That's just a whole new world right now, we're still trying to watch in terms of the ESAs, what's the impact they're going to be. I think when you look at expectations. Really giving all seven of you a voice. See how we come together and where we wanna land on each of those. Also at our next board meeting, what we would do. Last year, Doug, or actually last two years, you've served as our representative the day before. So if you would like to continue or if someone else would like to go up on that Wednesday before the I A S B convention on Thursday, we're always looking for someone to be our delegate as well.
Yeah, so look through this and then at the next meeting, we will talk about what's the thing we wanna prioritize. Cause there's eight of them that we usually do between three and four. Last year we did four.
We did. So you can see in your, in your supplemental material, you can see the four that we selected last year, how we wrote those out, what that looked like. We can do that or just take top eight because I think, I don't know. Not top eight. Here's our top eight, just take them all. But I, I think, Doug, when you're there and they're going through the process, they usually use the ones that would be from I A S B and they select the big ones anyway. So I was trying to craft our own, probably is not real helpful. Unless you have some thoughts or advice.
I guess I was thinking about as I go through this, there's many different ways to look at this and value what I think will be important. One of the factors that isn't in here is the administration's perspective on how they performed against the things we asked for last year. Who would really like that kind of information somehow?
Would you like that tonight or?
Do you wanna dump it out right here or we'll take it?
You know, I think, so going through, I'll start with priority of number four last year is mental health. I think they continue to work through that process and you'll see that's in here again in this, one of the top eight that they have in here. I think mental health, it's, it's just tough because the staffing across the city, across the state is so hard and trying to find people to fill that role. But again, mental health is still top priority, will be a top priority. I think the educators staff shortage and quality instruction, I think they did some great strides. Number one with the increase in salary this last year was huge. Making sure it's forty-five thousand and the sixty, and the sixty-two five after that, which is a, a great step forward. I think some of the things they've changed, the way you can hire people or the, like with our teacher apprenticeship program that we have, we're looking at shortening that, good or bad, shortening the student teaching window to get them in the classroom quicker. We need to make sure we have a strong mentoring program to help them then. I think they've looked at how you take someone from industry and bring them into the classroom at a quicker rate also is good. So I think they've done some good strides there. We just have to make sure that we're still hiring quality teachers. You don't wanna sacrifice quickness for quality either. So that's something we're watching. Educational opportunities. I think again, when you look at that, the public school funding where we're at, that's just a whole new world right now. We're still trying to watch in terms of the E S As, what's the impact they're going to be. I think when you look at expectations, which you'll see in here, if you offer E S As, what's the accountability for the private school going to be or a charter school going to be? Will they be the same as a public school? Those are all questions. We'll have to wait and see where that lands, cause right now they're not the same. So like that, you'll see that when you read through these eight, that's some things that they'll continue to still discuss. As far as preschool or the P K school funding, I'll start with the bottom one, the third in the drop out at risk. Again, that's in here. I think that's very high on our list because again, that's another two and a half percent increase of state funding that we could receive in that area of at risk that, I remember if it might, if it's another million dollars or so that we would get for at risk funding that we don't receive. So hopefully they come back with some of that. I know Chris Canoyer always is trying to get that for us and it just doesn't go through at the last minute. When you look at special education, again, I think that they can continue to look at that, that's, that was in here and not. But changing the weighting, so when you have a high need student, there's more money available. Cause right now, remember we overspent special, that comes through our taxpayer money back. I mean, so really it's probably one half, it's one or the other, still gonna come from public funds in some way. Supplemental state aid, again, the two and a half that we're living is not ideal, I think from where we want to be. Now, when I say, when I say it's ideal, they have come with freed up some ways, you can spend some money at times or raising you the supplemental to get up to the forty-two fi- or the forty-five thousand. That helps when your S S A is not as high. But I'm not sure how many times they keep pulling those different levers to help offset a two point five S S A. So again, you'll see that in here as well as a factor. So I guess that's, not a hundred percent pleased. What it wasn't like last year was a doom and gloom. There were some positive things that truly did transpire.
And I would just add that, you know, like for instance, in priority three where they're, they're doing that, they had the increase in the salary. Let's just hope that, you know, and somehow in the language, and I have, I, I've looked a little bit at the, what they've written there, that we continue to work on that, but also don't take away then other benefits. It should be in addition, like increase in the salary, but don't take away, like don't reduce hypers or any of those things. Cause then you're, 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 you're taking one and then you're losing on the other and ends up really not being in that benefit. So it'd be keeping what the, the, that benefit's intact, but increasing the salary doing other things. And I think that that's what I think some of the worry is, is that while not really, they're increasing their salary, but now they're gonna take away some of the hypers. We don't think that that's gonna do well for trying to recruit and retain teachers and other staff.
You know, one thing I have that we did not have a priority this last year, but I think an un- unknown right now is with the legislation that changed at the end with A A's. I think there's some, again, pros and cons to what transpired there. But I'm really nervous about even on the special education side, when that's not being touched. I think people are starting to leave the A A because of the unknown of what's gonna happen. And I'm afraid that our quality of service could decrease even in the world of special education because people aren't gonna be there or to find people. So unintended consequence could be a potential consequence down the road a year from now. So I think, again, that is in here is one of the priorities. How do we keep looking at what that looks like? And so good things in here, just read through them. I'm really, like I said, open to your ideas, what you're thinking as a team that we can bring.
Okay, no required motion on that. We'll be talking about that again. The next is the board policy statement, number two, point E three, section five oh four notice of parent rights and procedural safeguards, first reading. Uh, Leanne.
Yeah, so just wanna thank you all again for the opportunity to come into a school district and learn so many new things in six weeks already. So this is great. You know, as I'm starting to just get a little more comfortable in my seat and going through word polity, policies, doing internal audits and, and ensuring that we are compliant with any state and federal regulations. Our section five oh four did jump out at me pretty quickly. So what you have or what you have been sent is our new section five oh four notice of parent rights and procedural safeguards. Everything that you see in blue was in our previous policy and everything that's in black is new and now gets us within compliance of the regulation under section five oh four. We, it, it seems like there's a lot that was added here, but just remember our policy did have other language. I just didn't bring all of it over. So under this new parent rights and procedures, this would be the one page document that our parents would be handed before five oh four meetings, before reevaluations or anything for us to be in compliance. The other, uh, there's two provisions that we didn't have that I needed to make sure that we got in here, which was not just the parent rights, but they needed to be notified of where their student records were kept and how they could get access to them. So that's now in our policy as well as who the contacts are for whether or not it's five oh four or title nine, any type of grievance processes. So everything is spelled out here now in a summary. And then you were also sent the Pleasant Valley Community School District Parent Rights and Procedural Safeguards booklet. So this is twenty-six pages, so it's not horribly long. But this gives our parents and our students everything that they need to have to understand how our processes work, who they need to contact, what the steps are, if they wanna appeal, if they wanna file a complaint, if they wanna complain. All of this is laid out in the regulation and now it's in this nice little booklet that we have that we can offer electronically or we could physically offer during five oh four meetings if parents want to have those as well.
And last, you remember, Jill talked about briefly when she would, when we had that special ed update as well. While they've gone through the five oh four manual this past year, trying to update it, put the five oh four team together. Um, that's just an extension of that work here. And then we'll also be sending this into the O C R for their review after tonight as well to see if they're on the same agreement of what we have here for their review.
Any questions? So read through that. We're gonna do, we will actually vote on this on August twelfth, the second meeting. So please peruse it. Any issues or questions? I would say you should email Leanne and she can give you some context. And then we should plan to re, or rediscuss this little meeting. All right, moving on to a, a new business board policy statement, one oh three, non discrimination and harassment based on sex policy, first reading. Again, let's see.
So I, I do have notes for this one, cause title nine is brand new to me. I have, I've never dove into it before. And so understanding the changes for the twenty twenty-four regulations was quite extensive. And so I just wanna make sure at a high level view, I can cover what those changes are and then if you have questions. I think the most important thing to note in this right now is there is a federal and state injunction. And so while this could potentially go into effect on August first, we do not believe that is gonna happen. However, I am being proactive in having this ready because we don't know if or when it could. So we will continue to operate under our twenty twenty regulations and twenty twenty policies. But this is just for us to be within compliance in the event the twenty twenty-four regulations get put into effect. So the changes that I, I think are gonna have some impact on operations and, and could prompt some legal risk if we don't ensure that we're complying and following because they have made it so extensive in your reporting and investigation. One of the big things is the expansion of definitions and jurisdiction. So in twenty twenty-four, not only did they expand the what, but also the where. So twenty twenty definition with sex discrimination or harassment. And twenty twenty-four has dramatically expanded that and has an expansive list of things that now would be covered under the policy. The jurisdiction is the where. Prior to in twenty twenty, the regulation allowed for school districts to opt whether they wanted to include outside activities that were not school related. Twenty twenty-four mandates that whether it's a school related activity or not, off campus, online, we still have an obligation if it is reported to investigate that complaint. They have also added sexual orienta- orientation and gender identity. And there is to explicitly recognize as discrimination based. Those are two of the major items that are in the statutes and, and currently being challenged by twelve different states, I believe it is that we're up to now. The other thing that has been expanded and very clearly defined is pregnant and parenting students and employees. So lactation rooms, all of these things that have expanded the regulation to ensure that we have these and can offer them as well as voluntary leaves of absence for pregnancy or related conditions. So that isn't currently covered in the twenty twenty. Training, we are required to provide an annual training in the twenty twenty-four regulations to all employees, not just those who could be on your title nine team. So that might not be a bad idea to do in any way annually, whether it's in the regulation or not. So that one, but just pointing out some of the differences. The other thing with the twenty twenty-four regulation is it requires a barrier analysis. So as a title nine team, it's us going out to our buildings, going to sporting events, talking to teachers, students, parents to say, hey, what could we do different to help you in the event you don't feel comfortable coming forward? One of the things Brian and I identified just going through this was, you know, we have an anonymous reporting for bullying, harassing. Should we have one for sex discrimination or harassment? Yes. So that's a barrier that we can automatically take out of place and we can start, start keeping track of these things. This is a, this is a required reporting. So we would have to keep track of all of these things when we identified them and when we were able to, to remove the barriers. And I think one of the things for me that I'm trying to wrap my brain around is normally when a regulation is changed or updated, the old one goes away. Title nine unfortunately is not going to be retroactive, which means in perpetuity, we have to keep the twenty twenty regulation and the twenty twenty-four because there is no time limits for reporting under title nine. So because somebody could come back ten years from now and say, I was discriminated against based off sex in April of twenty twenty-four, I would have to use the twenty twenty regulation. Anything after August first, I would have to use the twenty twenty-four regulation. So not, not having one go away is, is really just a, a bit much. But right now, the only one we're gonna be using is twenty twenty. So, so we're good right there. You know, as you start expanding definitions and opening more doors, you naturally will have more reporting. So that's one of the things I definitely wanna try to keep us open, transparent, having that place where people feel that they can come forward to, to address things early on and it not get to a point where we're now into full blown, you know, investigations. So those are the highlight changes. One of the requirements of twenty twenty-four, even if we are not putting it into effect August first, is we do have to send a letter to the members of our community notifying them that we are not enacting it because there is a current injunction. That is a, a requirement. So that is also in the board minutes for us to be able to put out to the public. And then the last thing that you were sent was the policy and procedure for sex-based discrimination and harassment, the twenty twenty-four title nine. So this is sixty-eight page document that now gets us in compliance with all of the policies as well as the procedures that are required under twenty twenty-four.
So by some miracle, it goes live August one and we haven't approved the policy. What's the plan?
So in the state of Iowa right now, what they're basically saying is just what we're doing tonight is the introduction to it. So you are aware of it. Should that be enacted, then we would come back to another board meeting and do a second reading at that time and approve it at that time. So we will just wait until the injunction is over and after our next board meeting, then we put that in place.
Okay. We'll have to have an emergency one on August one to do it. That was really sort of where I was looking.
And, and within the, within the actual policy, I have language that says effective August first or when the courts release for us following federal law. So it's, it, that language just gives us a little bit of protection if August twelfth is when we get to the ability to actually do the second reading.
I got one question. So with the injunction right now that's going through, there's the group moms for liberty. And with that, I have a strong belief that some of our schools will follow within that. And how that's worded is that it's based upon the specific school. So how would we as a district go through and break that up as to which schools this rule would apply to?
Not following for sure.
So my understanding is, is with that group, if you have a parent that their kid goes to a specific school, that school, this title, the, this whole deal will not apply to that school, that specific school.
Well, I know the lawsuit and the injunction right now is by county. So I, I.
Scott County is listed.
Yes, we are listed. Yes.
I know, I was gonna say, I know Pleasant Valley is one of the schools that, some of the schools will probably end up in that.
And, and I'd be, I, I haven't dug that deep in yet, just knowing that I wanted to get to this point here first. But that's definitely something we can look into.
And I haven't heard about individual schools being.
I, I just know that there are certain parents within the district that are part of that. So.
Sure.
I don't understand, I wanna understand your question. Sorry, I'm not.
So from, uh, from the injunction and how that's all going through right now is it's listed by school and how the, how that judge faced it is that if you have a parent that goes to Riverdale Heights for instance, that school would be exempt from this whole.
Title nine.
Title nine. And then the rest of the schools.
Just for my child?
No, it'd be for that school.
For the whole school?
For the entire school.
So if the injunction is lifted, that would go into place, then would that, that is not lifted then for everybody then, is what you're saying?
So yeah, then, then at that point in time, we'll, so like, say they threw out the Moms for Liberty thing, right? Then it would go through for all, for the entire district and is my, is my understanding. But the way that it's worded right now, it sounds like it's by school.
Let us check further than that.
And then that's something that I just want you to look at is, is that something that it could get messy there is, okay, well, you have a kid that's going to Riverdale Heights, well now, a year from now, they go to the junior high. Now you're having to change that school's wording. It, it, it would get very messy on that.
Yeah, I know, cause when we read the injunction, that was Kansas City area, uh, coming out of Kansas City courts. It listed Moms for Liberty as part of that group that was leading that charge. So let us go back and look deeper into that, knowing what your question, see what you find out. So I had not heard that.
I'm sort of confused. Well, how, if this is an injunction, isn't it based on district, not individual, any huge at school? So then how, for the board, you decide, or whatever, we decide this, it usually applies to all the schools. So we don't have any group that's gonna say, well, Riverdale Heights is excluded unless it is, unless it's.
The way that's worded in the courts is by school.
So my understanding was public entity is by district. And if you are private charter, they filed individually, so their schools were listed. But I could have read that incorrectly.
So the, so it's happening right now with the universities too. So at the, at the school level, at the, at the grade school, high school, it was listed by school. And that's why the universities, they're all listed individually too, is because it had to have filings within each school. And it, it, it's, it'll be very, very messy. Goes through like that.
I can't, I cannot sit here tonight and say why that would be. We'll look into that for sure.
Sure.
With our attorneys or Leanne can research that further as well. So it's just, this whole thing about July first, when the D E came out with this, and this is like, the first thing they're like, this whole title one is just a massive upbringing, what's gonna happen. So Leanne has really dove into what this can look like and trying to get some speed. So if we do have to move forward, we're ready to move forward. But if we don't have to move forward, then we have twenty twenty, we're still in acting. So. And I'll give you an example. I mentioned it very well, Leanne, regarding like some things we'll still do, like lactation rooms. We already have one of those at every single room in our schools. Cause it's the right thing to do. So there's some things in the twenty twenty-four, we'll still do it for the right reasons. So.
The document we received today is the twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
And everything in that document, I mean, not everything, there's probably some duplicate information from twenty twenty. But unlike the previous document, as we read through this, there's not highlights of blue.
I am not versed on twenty twenty yet. I needed to get through twenty twenty-four and understand what the changes were so I could make sure that we had a document and procedures ready in the event this injunction, cause twenty twenty is already done. So I would be able to, now that I have this done, be able to go pull the twenty twenty and tell you what the language exact changes. I have highlights from an organization that I joined, but I would be able to go word for word throughout the document to show you what the changes actually were. The biggest is gonna be the expansion of the definition of sex. And that's, that's where majority of the language I've seen going through. The biggest is gonna be the expansion of the definition of sex, um and that's, that's where majority of the language I've seen going through twenty twenty four is changing. Um, adding mandatory sections for uh gender identity and expression under the First Amendment. So those are things quickly I know, but I, I could be able to do that um by next board meeting, be able to pull that together for you.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding, and so the twenty twenty, if we wanted to see that as on the district's website?
We're gonna go through and update it first.
Oh, you're, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because also like, for example, interview teams, like Mike Zimmer was our Title IX coordinator per se. And the interview teams and what that looks like, we'll go through and Leanne will update all those as well, then we can email that out to you.
Okay.
Let's get that, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, so there's no required motion there. Um, next um is construction updates um regarding what's been happening over the summer. Mr. Shrews and Leland is here.
Yeah, you know, I'll start this night um by saying, you know, when you build a house and you're always getting down to the last minute, you know, if you're not gonna make it or not? But that's kinda what I'm talking about right now, is every day it's like, we keep asking, where are we, how are we doing, are we getting closer, are we gonna make it? And I feel like it's gonna be a, a race to the finish here, so Leanne will kinda walk you through and I, I think it's, there's big things happening every day. But we getting nervous on some of the fine details that need to be done as well. So we got a long email today from the project manager saying, here's what's happening this week, here's what's happening next week. And gonna keep just doing this, um, I will let, kind of walk you through some pictures he's brought forth here today and kinda give you a.
Yeah, 'cause that picture, if you would have seen this a week ago, you'd say, oh no. Huge difference between today and a week ago. He uh, probably the biggest thing that we've, we've, Brian and I, there's times we're both frustrated, I'll just be honest, because a lot of timelines are sliding. We look at Forest Grove, Forest Grove originally was gonna be done in January, February, we're gonna have fall, spring to get it ready. And then it slid all the way into, it's about June, May, June, before it was ready. And then you're doing punch list items, they're still working on punch list items at Forest Grove. So it's not complete a hundred percent, it's probably ninety five to ninety eight percent complete. It'll be ready for the first day of school, but it was just something that we wanted off our plate, so we could focus on like the junior high or the high school.
I think they've kinda taken that and said, okay, we're set aside, we can get that done, we need to work with the junior highs, so we're like, we'll get this done, we'll get it done, but it's.
So, well, we, I've also talked with other districts, this is not unique just to Pleasant Valley. Clinton's also having issues, there, there's a section where they can't move into, they're gonna stay in their old section for six more months because the new section's not ready. Uh North Scott's got some issues. Uh, I, I guess in public forum, I really don't wanna speak for them, but they've also got some concerns. Davenport Schools also has some, and it seems to be a contractor thing across the board. Cause it only takes one contractor anywhere in the whole process, cause they're all dependent on the contract before them. So if one does not show up for a month or six weeks, it delays the whole project.
Or you're waiting for two bells for an air conditioning unit for about a month or so?
That was more like two or three months.
Yeah, and that delayed us.
So, that, that actually is a great picture right there, that's a nice looking picture, we're getting closer anyway. The uh, the only thing that'll change at some point, that's where the ball field will go back in right there where the grass is at. But we, and see, that's just the other thing, it's, it's just delayed everything we've been wanting to do, cause we pulled the ball field out of there, right where the grass was. So the goal was to start putting the ball field back in in June first. That truly just got paved a week ago, where you see it black and graded, that's within the last day or two. And we still have to add more grading because it's, there's actually a swell right there. So you don't want people sitting in pools of water when there was ball field. So, yes, we've got more grading to do, but it just delays all the stuff that we wanna do or need to do. Playgrounds, playgrounds started out great. This one's a picture of Bridgeview, if you looked at Bridgeview today, uh it looks identical, there's a little, there's, this is pictures from like a month ago. But now since they pulled off, where the walkway is to the right, to the playground equipment, it's all weeds and grass growing real high and long. I'm amazed how, it's too bad it wasn't grass, cause it's truly four foot high and thick. Uh, but they're coming back, they're actually back in town today, they've, they've pulled off for about three weeks. Uh, but this rain, we just got a lot of rain. So that's, they'll be fine here, uh it's gonna affect Pleasant View the most, cause they've got the most left to do. That's Pleasant View right there, so that was this morning, so they've still got a lot of dirt to move around, the, the uh. The sub drains and stuff have to be put in, the gravel has to be done. That'll probably delay them two to three days, right there is the rain that we got to. This is Riverdale, Riverdale should be in pretty good shape, because they, they were to this point, so that water will drain off and it's not mud. So, so they actually had a crew of about eight, nine, eight or nine guys today that were gonna start putting playground equipment here at Riverdale. So they, they should be, they should be fine, Pleasant View will be the one that'll be the, the bigger issue for us. So, one thing we probably need to talk more about though is the internals of the junior high, there's sections that will not be done. Uh, originally they were, they told us that we'd have that new wing, which is where all the offices and new classrooms were at. That would be around the first of June, like June tenth was soon as school got out, which was great, cause we could start assembling furniture, move everybody in. Uh, we didn't start assembling furniture until like two weeks ago, because it, they didn't even have all the carpet and ceilings in yet. So it's just stuff to be aware of, that if you happen to get into buildings, there's not gonna, there's gonna be certain areas that just aren't ready yet.
So right now, as of this week, um Leanne's team has put together the desks and chairs and tables, they're mostly in the classrooms. They have plastic over the carpet to try to keep it as clean as possible before the school year starts. Uh, hopefully they'll start on the hallways with carpeting in the new addition. Um, in the main addition right now, we have a consumer science room, that one I doubt will be done by the first day of school. Yeah, a couple of weeks into the school year, so Mike's working with his team to adjust what those units would look like and the room that we'd be in. The biggest thing right now is the current main office that we had in the building, that's being turned into the counseling office. That's probably our number one push to get that done, because you're in a few weeks, you have a lot of families coming in and trying to have that room ready. Um, so those are kind of our big pushes and they know that, to get that space done, so that's where we're kinda holding our fingers. But then, just cleaning hallways, you know, once you get our regular building back in together, we have to swatch the hallways and do all those things. There's things that, we're using August twelfth as kind of our big deadline date here to get where we at and figure out what our plans would be. It reminds me a lot when we put air conditioning in the junior high back in about two thousand. And how that building was tore apart, you're like, it's never gonna get done, it got done. But I mean, as you sit here going, there's a lot to be done yet, so. But thanks to Leanne's team, hopefully we can just move forward, if we have to have all hands on deck. Everybody told our ministers, be ready, you might get a call on a Friday night and Saturday, we're all going to the junior high to move stuff. I mean, that might be what it's gonna be to get ready, so.
Cause the old, the existing art room, the old original art room, that's now being used as, will be used as a storeroom. Because like all the cabinetry that's going in, the, the family consumer science or all the furniture that we can't get into areas, it's all arrived, it came in June. So now we have to get it out of the hallways and get it, get it stored places. There'll be a few rooms that won't get done also, because now they're gonna be committed to storerooms. Which just creates extra times for the district, because you're moving it two or three times, so.
Ready, we have a plan?
Yeah, we're not trying to spook anybody, we're just, we're just trying to be totally honest of what's happening, what's going on. Because we know there's some rumors floating around out there too at the same time, cause people walk through and they see it. There's never any rumors, especially with Facebook these days.
I don't go too far, so I'll come on down and.
You'll help move, perfect.
Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, I, I mean, reach out and let us know if we can help as well. I wonder if it's worth putting any type of announcement out that construction is, is progressing and we're gonna, you know.
Yeah, we keep saying like, another, give us a week, I mean, we're just trying to figure out, we, I mean, it's literally right now, day by day, week by week, just saying, where are you at? What's our timeline and when do we really get nervous and then sending a message out saying, what's it look like? Yeah, I mean, there was some encouragement with the email today, again, there's a lot of small details too that need to be taken care of, so.
Usually like that last, you'll be, you'll be a good advice on this one, cause like last ten percent is not ten percent of the job. That can take thirty, forty percent of, of the job. It's getting all the door locks in, it's getting the cameras up and running, it's getting the card access in, the handicap buttons, the door operators, all that still has to be done. But a lot of that, there isn't even ceilings where you could put it in yet. Let alone put it in and test it, so if it all goes smooth, we're in great shape. If it doesn't, you know, if you have to order something, it's gonna take a couple of weeks to get it, there's gonna be things that aren't gonna work.
And then how much fired marshal or from our ar- architects, how much time can we get into that room, even though it's not done? But they still let us be in the space, that, the occupancy side of it's huge. We'll wait and see.
So the contract slowness, it's mostly labor or mostly the weather, what would you say?
It's a labor.
So is it in specific areas of contractual labor, like electrical or pipe fitters or, or is it across the board, you're seeing it?
No, actually electrical and the pipe fitters have been excellent, and the plumbers have been really good. It's more on the front end, it's the footings and foundations and the block walls. Cause we're running the same thing already at the high school.
Okay.
That one's already delayed, and it's the same group doing it to us again. But that just slides to the.
Yeah.
It compounds because, you know, let's say the plumber knew he was, he figured he was gonna be in there in June. And he, it's all, he has all that manpower laid out for them, and then you're gonna give it to him in August. His manpower is at a different job, right?
And well, like for example, we're waiting for those valves to come in for the air conditioning, where you couldn't put your ceiling tile in, because you put your ceiling tile and it's humid. They all start to bow and then they drop, so that delayed us getting the ceiling put together, so they came.
Yeah, and then they couldn't do the ceiling work, they couldn't do the flooring work, because they're working up on the ceiling, you don't wanna ruin the floor.
So what would be the plan, let's say for the playgrounds, if it's not time to go to school, so that's.
I mean, again, I think that'll be very, very close, unless the weather turns really bad on us.
Yeah.
Um, if it's not done, again, we'd like, we'd give Bridgeview where we just put the fence around and they finish it. I mean, it's amazing when, like they brought the like, the equipment crew in today at Riverdale Heights. I bet they had that equipment in three days, four days. It is amazing how fast that went up at Bridgeview, it was like overnight, they put that in. And then it's just getting the, the team to come in and pour the surfaces when they're all ready, so.
They've got it all lined up, and actually, I, I spent quite a bit of time with, with the playground people today. He said, we've been doing this for fifteen years, he said, we've never, ever missed a deadline. But he, but he was honest, he said, but this one's got me nervous.
PV doesn't have to be first.
Exactly. All the things we don't wanna be doing.
No, I mean first, yeah. Again, eh, it's been a stressful summer, a lot of things going on, it's not just these projects, but you have a lot of construction happening in buildings and.
Mm-hmm.
Painting projects or special ed rooms being redesigned, so there's a lot happening right now, so.
How, how are those, like regular maintenance, summer projects going, are those all doing well?
They're doing really well, but we, and, and Brian, you can tell me if I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, but typically like the first week out of school. Like seventy percent of our projects start, especially in the first two or three days. So within that first month, we have probably seventy percent of the projects done. It's very, it's hard, but you gotta get them out of the way. We still, you're always gonna have a few that, that can get there, that can get materials, but those are all doing pretty well. Uh, but if you take Pleasant View, Pleasant View, the main electrical switch here was all upgraded this summer. Uh, we just did the natural gas in front of the high school, if you've noticed, they were digging holes in front, there's two different places to dig in holes there. One's fiber optics for the city of Baton Rouge, but they actually increased our gas main going to the high school for this new construction. Uh, there's, there's this, there's a list of like thirty items that are separate from these projects. And the special needs room at the high school, that one's taken quite a while. All the cabinet, the flooring's in, the cabinetry's in, they're putting appliances and stuff in tomorrow, so that one's going well. Uh, there's just, there's a lot, and it's, if you wanna go over the list, sometimes you're bored unwilling, but.
Real nice change, you guys will see if you go to a football game or in a Spartan Stadium anytime, is they painted and freshened up the uh public restrooms. Which is a very nice touch, and they painted the exterior of it, so it looks.
We ex painted the exterior of the building on that side too.
So it looks nice.
The uh, and then you've got the next item on there is the scoreboard, so we'll be more working on the scoreboard too. As we're getting all that roughed in ahead of time, so when the scoreboard shows up, by the way, the scoreboard might be here early, found that out, Seth.
So we'll share that with you here in a minute.
Any other questions for Leanne? Okay, there's no. Thank you, Leanne.
You want me to stand here so I can give you?
Okay, yeah, let's hit that one next.
The next um item is a Spartan Stadium scoreboard, which you've already mentioned.
Yeah, so your question might be, why are we placing a stadium uh scoreboard? The current scoreboard we have right now is just over twenty years old that we have. The bigger issue at the high school stadium, if you've been there for games at any time, is probably the sound system is just outdated, it does not sound well at all. So what'll happen with this new uh scoreboard that we're putting in, where you see the PV on top, that is actually a speaker for the entire stadium. So all the sound system comes out of that speaker there. Um, what transpired here was we had a donor who came up to us and said, I'd be willing to help put this in, if you're willing to do it, and make it happen this year. So we've been working with that donor and going through, one thing that's different is, I mean, the total project price tag of this will be about four hundred fifty thousand dollars when it's all said and done. For the scoreboard, for the installation and for the electrical work that has to go into it. Because where you see the black section, the big rectangular piece there, that is a large uh LCD panel. That will have different things on it during, throughout the game, um projecting things on that screen. Was, we kept, we stayed with the traditional scoreboard underneath. The reason being, many times like for a soccer match, you may just use that bottom piece down there, not using the whole scoreboard itself or cross country or a track meet. So we still have the capability and the scoreboard can actually be run through your phone system. So if a coach isn't in there in practice, they can use that scoreboard with their phone to put a time up there and things like that. So the reason why we're bringing this tonight to the table is because what we're going to do, because the cost, the donor and some other donors. Don't wanna pay for it all upfront, cause it's a huge chunk, so it's actually a lease to purchase program over the course of five years. So we had to have the board approve that this is a lease payment over five years. Overall, the interest will cost about fifty thousand dollars in the project because of what we're borrowing in the interest rate, um but they're aware of that as well. So we just need signature on this to keep moving this forward, and Leanne kinda mentioned kinda where we are in the process right now, that'd be great. In terms of the wiring and the arrival date.
The arrival date, originally they were shooting first, they knew they, they expected to not make the first football game. Uh, cause they were expecting it to show up right around first of September.
Yeah.
Now they bumped that up by two weeks, and they, they said, well, so the ship dates right around the fifteenth, that can change, it can change daily, but. The uh, and I said, well, how long is the lead time for shipping, and only like a week, and he said, one to two days, which was kinda amazing really. So at that point, you might be ready for the first football game, it's possible. What is the date for the first?
We're not ready for the first football game, let me tell you right now, I don't wanna put that out there for anybody.
What, what is the date of the first football game?
Uh, I do have it written down, cause I have my timeline up when we were trying to map it out.
How much of the total cost is being covered by the donor?
So one donor right now is of the hundred thousand, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars per year, over fifty percent be covered by that one person.
And does the district have to give anything up to receive that, like a, a name of a business on anything or anything like that?
No, it'll be all, just like would always be. One thing that the company, Daktronics who we're working with, um they do have a advertisement plan that you can. They will do for you where they go out and sell ads. We've never really done that per se, the only time you really see it is in the gymnasium during basketball games, there's a little ticker that runs across. We've never gone to a large portion, now we may go out on our own and say, hey, does someone wanna give X amount of money? And we say, hey, it's a touchdown, today's touchdown sponsored by this business, well, I think it's better if we control that or like that, so we'll see, there might be a way to bring some income in. Um, our first football game is set for August thirtieth, that's the first game. If we don't make that, we set our next headline date, we'd like to, would have saw, would have been homecoming, which is September twenty seventh. And if we didn't make that, we said either October eleventh or the twenty fifth in time for senior night. So that was kind of our goal to get through those, so. The nice thing is our season this year is it's home away, home away the entire season. So if there's some reason we can't have it, and then the two week window maybe. The nice thing is our season this year is it's home away, home away the entire season, so if there's some reason we can't have it, and then the two week window maybe can work out.
So great, if we won't make the first football.
The current scoreboard will be up.
Yes, so what we did is, it worked out very well, where the current scoreboard sits, uh, let's see, on that corner, this will go next to it. So they can install it, and you can still see the old one, the old one will still be there, it'll still be functioning and all those things. And our control systems that we have right now, through Dectronics, will also control this thing here. What's different is you have a little TV screen, it's kind of a touchscreen, and when you wanna do a special graphic, you just touch that, it's pre-designed. We um, have purchased our pre-designed, because it comes with it, we've picked all those out already. Um, but they do have a curriculum that you can actually teach a class, and kids can take it as a class, and then they would actually run this. Design things for it, so if we'd like to go down that pathway, we have some kids who'd be very interested in that computer side of it. Um, once we get going, and we also have a teacher who's very excited as well, uh, who might go to help lead some of that work.
What's the end cost to us?
To us?
All in, things installed, it's being used, what is our end cost?
I'm hoping zero.
Okay.
Right now, I do know that if we need this first year, if we need to cover it, D is gonna cover twenty thousand if, if we need to. So, we are now working, once we get through tonight, we're gonna meet with the person who's giving the money, and then we also have some other people we're gonna contact and say, okay, here's where we are at. Where do you wanna go?
So the interest you mentioned about fifty K wouldn't even hit us potentially?
Correct, that we're hoping to wrap all that into this project, so it's not costing us anything.
And we've electrical folks for this already.
Worked on it.
Yeah.
Some fiber optics.
We just dipped out all.
Ways, because all the fiber optics and we're gonna go to the press box, this, and then the power comes from the building, so we have to run, we have to bore two different directions.
So the reason we weren't promising anything is because we're boring it underneath the new addition that's going in as well. So we're trying to work with our construction company, electrical company to make all this work, so that's where Leland's been trying to do this, so.
And I'm not sure if, I'm, he probably knew this already, but I didn't know it till today, because he said that the sound system is the upgraded version.
It is, there was two sound systems, we went with the larger one. The person who's donated really wanted it on this side, so that the loudness would go the other direction towards a certain city.
Go that way.
So, I think if you, you wanna crank this thing up, you're gonna hear it anywhere, you wanna hear it. But he didn't even say, if I'm paying for it, we're going with that one there, so he said, sounds great. It'll be loud.
So if he's paying over time, do we, are we signing legal documents to make sure we're not left holding the bag after the first year?
I think, I think we'll be okay. Yeah, I'll put some trust on that one.
Other questions? If not, then I will take a motion.
I need that the board approved the resolution for master equipment lease purchase agreement number five two nine two nine four L. And schedule number zero zero eight dash zero nine zero four nine four nine dash three zero zero. There to with the Huntington National Bank for the lease purchase of a new Pleasant Valley High School Spartan Stadium scoreboard as presented.
Second. Much of my question was by Mr. Ayers, that the board approved the resolution for master equipment lease purchasing agreement number five two nine two nine four L. And schedule number zero zero eight dash zero nine zero four nine four nine dash three zero zero. There to with Huntington National Bank for the lease purchase of a new Pleasant Valley High School Spartan Stadium scoreboard as presented. Roll call, vote please, Mr. Ayers.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Rockman.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
And Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, um, that.
Yeah, one more thing, just so you have awareness, when it comes to Spartan Stadium. One of the concerns we continue to have is about on the home side with bleachers and having railings going up. We have one quote already, we're getting the other quote to Wednesday of this week. Um, because of the price, whether it's gonna be, we're gonna get two quotes on it, at least informal quotes. Um, so I don't think it'll probably get done before the end of this football season, but people ask, we are truly trying to get that put in. What's delaying is we're gonna have to cut back some of our bleachers, because what, they're extended too far, so the walkways are too small to put the railings up the middle. We gotta cut them back to create a wide enough for the A D A compliance. So they're coming, we're gonna do the entire stadium, every single stairwell, up, bottom to top, so that we're in compliance, so. If you hear that, just say, we understand, we've been working on it, that's the only thing that'll be done in the football season, so.
Are there any plans to look at railings for the, the gym?
Back and look, I know we have some in there right now, but not a lot. It's just that lower section where there might be a little cutout, I think it's all that we have, so, that could be the next thing we can look at, yeah.
Okay.
So, sorry, the cutting back bleachers makes me nervous, because standing there can be pretty tight.
Yeah, um, it'll be probably about sixty seats total, I think. It's just, it's up the one side, is where it'll be, so.
All right, so feature.
Follow up to the question that you asked earlier, so, May of twenty twenty four, uh, case four twenty four was filed in Arkansas by states that are statewide. Based off of different provisions that we're claiming are in violation of our state laws. In July of twenty twenty four, case five twenty four was filed in Kansas, that was by Mom for Liberty, and the schools that are specifically mentioned in there. Um, are schools where they are, their children are members that attend. So those four from Iowa that are specifically listed are falling under the Kansas statute, the state of Iowa is falling under the Arkansas. So we wouldn't have that if Iowa's injunction gets passed, whereas if it is, there's only four states in Iowa under the federal case.
I think that, I know that there's another date, I think it's the twenty sixth, that that date, that, that list will be updated again.
Yeah, they, they, they try, they've been trying to update it weekly, just knowing August first is coming really quickly, so trying to allow us to stay prepared for it. But if there's any other updates, I'll make sure that I can get them to.
And we'll stay on time then, as we can.
Our next board meeting is August twelfth, um, at six P M, and then um, the first day of school is uh, August twenty third. And then we do have a meeting also, another board meeting in August, on August twenty sixth, uh, which is our regular meeting time at six P M. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, two things, are we looking at a second internet connection to the school system? Um. I saw it on the whiteboard, sorry.
Yes, I'm pausing, here's the reason why. Um, A E A has always housed our system, which you are aware of. Um, with media being taken out of A E A, and they had a person resigning from their media department. We're starting to talk about, do we house that whole system that's at the A right now? Do we house it in our district, or does the city of Bettendorf house it? So it's in a permanent location that wouldn't be gone anywhere, and then also trying to look at what's our opportunity for second line around. So that's in the works right now, that's what you saw on the board.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate you looking at it, because it does worry me that we only have one connection to the district.
Yeah.
Normal business, that, that's of a certain size, we're definitely of that size.
Yeah, Kevin met with our director of technology, met with the city of Bettendorf, A E A, and maybe Bettendorf school, just to have that conversation, what could it look like moving forward?
And then the second thing is, teacher welcome.
So, so the kickoff for that is July's.
Twenty, August, uh, first day we have is the fifteenth.
For new teacher orientation?
Uh, well, no, all teachers come back.
Teacher kickoff. I bet it Wednesday.
It's a Monday. I hope it's a Monday.
So you guys will all be welcome at eight o'clock, is when we kick off there, then the other one you'd have, what's the day of our breakfast at the Y, or at the museum?
August fifteenth.
Again, you're all welcome to that breakfast, I think that's a seven thirty start. And we'll introduce all the new teachers, all the Valley, Bettendorf, New River, Vermont will be there, sometimes Scott Community College will be there. So, we'll get those, we'll send those meeting makers to you, we can do that. Any questions?
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Office meeting is adjourned.